We're going to start on time. It was four o'clock, which is good. I want to welcome everybody to the town of Appleton on March 2014, 5th, 2014, four o'clock, the City Council Chambers Joint Study Session with the Funding and Audit Committee and the City Council. Prior to the roll call, I'd like to make one comment. Some people probably noticed that Councilmember Dodd is not present. As of yesterday, Councilmember Dodd is for personal reasons, so he's in the Council. Those of you of interest, that topic will be on the next agenda for the Council. So come the...
March 19.
March 19, we'll be addressing that. So, to the clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Whitmer? Vice Mayor DeGolias?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Audit Finance members, Greg Conlin?
Here.
Jim Massey?
Here.
Alan Entelman?
Yes, here.
Bob Polito's excused and Diane Sandus' excused.
Thank you, Bill's present.
Here.
Thank you, Bill, we were waiting for you.
I was driving behind somebody who was texting the clerk on his cell phone. He said, "I'd have to please..."
Thanks.
It wasn't ready.
We're going to ask for any public comments. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a couple of comments? Seeing none, opposing public comments, we're going down to the study session. Item number one, review and discuss proposed annual budget reserve policies. That's me? It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. You have a staff report before you. In the fiscal year 2013-14 budget, it was noted that beyond the town's basic reserve requirements of 15 percent for the emergency reserve and 20 percent for the general reserve, we have an unallocated general fund reserve balance of about $4.8, $4.9 million. Pursuant to the town's adopted policy, in my city manager's budget cover letter, I had made some suggestions for the Council's consideration that it needed to evaluate on how to use that unallocated reserve. Those three items were, one, look, take a look at the town's existing reserve policy and see if it needs to be adjusted; two, consider some additional contributions to capital projects; or three, allocate some of those funds toward the town's long-term liabilities for OPEB or pension. So, you had that. At the time, you directed that the Finance Committee take a closer look at that. So indeed, they have. They spent several months going through that data. And they looked at the town's current reserve policy and looked at a proposed reserve policy. The current reserve policy basically says you set aside 15 percent of the actual annual operating expenditures for emergencies. You set about a minimum of 20 percent for the unassigned balance. Can't drop below that 20 percent. That's where we get our 15 and 20. And then you have some assigned fund balances could be set aside for one-time expenditures, such as a one-time reserves, such as a building reserve or a capital project reserve, et cetera. So the way that shakes out in our current policy, we have a beginning general fund balance of about $7.7 million. We have general fund revenues of about $1.49 million. These are 2014 numbers, but some of them, they don't exactly match current budgeting of audit committee members. So everything you go through, it's just the calculation that's important. So you have the general fund balance beginning of 7.7, 17.9 revenues, 10.4 expenditures leaves you at ending fund balance of 9.2. You allocate the 15 and the 20, that's 1.5 and 2.0. That leaves you the unallocated general fund balance of 5.5. That's how the current policy works. Of that 5.5, we have a building reserve on top of that, maybe over $120,000. And then we've got an OPEB calculation that we put in this year, if the budget say we can contribute $250,000 toward OPEB if you want to. Or, as the Council chose to do in the current fiscal year, allocate $2 million directly toward the town's long-term OPEB liability for the post-employment benefits. So the Finance Committee took a look at the policy, and they have looked at it and they suggested that we take a set process. We set up our two emergency reserves, the 15 percent and the 20 percent. And then if the remaining unassigned balance is greater than 35 percent of the general funds operating revenues, consider some other allocations. Consider funding any projected CIP, capital improvement program shortfall over the next three years. Contribute up to 15 percent toward the CalPERS pension obligation beyond the town's annual required contribution. Contribute up to 15 percent toward the other post-employment benefits, again, beyond the town's annual required contribution. And then consider a commensurate deduction in the parcel tax. The policy was written as a permissive policy. There were members of the Finance Committee here who talked about that discussion, as they had their meanings. So what does that look like in terms of our calculations? That basically says you have the general fund expenditures of 10.4, your audited general fund balance of 7.6, your two allocated reserves of 15 and 20. That leaves you the audited unassigned balance of 4.04. You take a look at your capital projects, the $2 million number, there's a hypothetical. You take a look at your capital projects over the next three years, you see where your money's coming in, what your shortfalls might be, allocate that amount to it. Here, I'm stuck in a $2 million number. You've got a net remaining of $2 million from that 2.04. You take your 15 percent for CalPERS, your 15 percent for OPEB, put those aside, or you pay down toward the trust. And then you have the remaining unassigned general fund balance of 1.4. And at that point, you go through the process of evaluating the reduction in parcel tax. Again, that's, it's a permissive policy, not a mandated policy.
Can I interrupt a quick question? Because the capital project needs to be CIP years, one through three, your $2 million. That was hypothetical?
Yes.
That's just a plug number. Do you have any sense of how much the capital project projections are over the next three years and the needs are?
Not, we're not in that discussion right now. This is just more of a discussion of the policy and how it would be implemented.
Well, we have a number of 14, four, for five years.
It could be substantially more than that.
Could be. 14 million, 400,000 for five years in our capital project budget, for five years.
That's a whole wish list.
Yeah. But that number does not...
It's just a number.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't include the unbalanced, and it could be a bigger number. And it might, in truth, be bigger than whatever your unallocated general fund reserve is.
That includes a canal in the...
Right. But it's projected shortfall, so how do you know what the shortfall?
What we would do is, we would go through the budget and project out general fund revenues over time, measure in all those other taxes that we get from the state or set aside, and put those in and determine what our real known capital project expenditures are going to be over that three years. You know, we've got road projects we do every year, we've got the Marsh Channel project, for example. We know we're going to be doing those projects. We wouldn't put in the hypothetical projects, the big wish list stuff, because we don't know what those are. These would have to be quantitative capital projects over the next three years that we can compare against projected revenues.
Okay.
And that three-year number could be one year, it could be two years, it could be five years. That's the pleasure of the Council.
You know, you just took a three-year instead of a five-year.
Yeah. Staff's recommendation, and before you engage the Finance Committee in their discussions, we think the reserve policy that they came up with is a great framework for discussion of the Council to have every single year as you go through the budget process. It just creates the discussion. You've got to come up with a parcel tax debate every June anyway about whether to change it, raise it, decrease it, modify it, whatever. This provides you the framework to at least engage in the discussion.
I'd just like to speak to the pension reserve issue. I think somehow in public finances, people get confused by the fact that we do it all on a cash basis, not on an accrual basis. And just to take the state of California as an example, we recently had the governor say, "Bravo, we have a balanced budget." Ta-da! You know, in fact, we can even have a rainy day fund, and we're supposed to all feel terrific and go out and find new ways to spend money, so he said, "Don't spend it." Meanwhile, we also read that the CalPERS pension fund is accruing 20, is growing, the liability is growing $20 million a day. That's, you know, 700 million, no.
80 million.
80 million. 80 million a day?
80 billion, no, 80 billion in total.
Yeah, I mean, just the...
22 million per day.
Yeah, okay, yes. Okay, so my point is that we don't really have a balanced budget. You know, if we bring in the accrual perspective, then we, as well as the cash outlays, we are also accruing larger and larger liabilities which don't get reflected on the budget statements of the state because unfortunately, that's on a cash basis accounting. And so I'm just concerned that we fully and accurately reflect the, our best estimate of the present value of our liability for, or reserve, because I think a lot of expert people believe that CalPERS is using unrealistically optimistic assumptions. And from time to time, we get hit by nice little surprises like, "Ta-da, we've just discovered that our people have gotten older or lived longer." Big surprise. So, so I just think...
It's good for you on date.
Yeah.
It's good for everybody here in this room. I'm kind of happy down there.
That's right, the longer I live, the more I'm...
Short term has worked for me either.
So, that's why we had all this discussion about, we ought to have an actuary do a realistic assessment of the present value of our liability. The general opinion of accountants and actuaries is that they ought to bring these liabilities, which are firm, fixed, you know, that public employees say this is absolutely contractual, you know, and it's set in concrete, it can't be adjusted and so forth. So these are certainty liabilities. And that, you know, what private sector firms have to do is use a realistic rate like, you know, a low-risk rate like 5 percent. By the way, unfortunately, one very bad consequence of all this is then CalPERS and other governments around this country also are caught up in the idea, well, we want to use these very realistic, unrealistic, high-assured assumptions in order to get the liability down, and then we're going to try to make them come true by making more and more risky assumptions, which is not appropriate, or investments, which is not appropriate in a public employee's retirement. So anyway, I just think that we need to, it's sort of a blend of accrual accounting, but we need to show as an expenditure each year, a contribution reflecting just what I've described, to the, our own, don't have to give it to CalPERS, just keep it in our own bank account. But a contribution to a reserve that protects us against unforeseen increases that CalPERS isn't even going to warn us about. So they, they keep that a big secret, but we need to penetrate that by figuring it out for ourselves and reflecting that in our financial statements.
Well, I have a couple of questions. So first, the slide that we just had up there that showed the general fund unassigned balance, that doesn't include any of the parcel tax funds, is that correct? The general fund expenditures for... Well...
The bottom line, 5.5?
Yeah, parcel taxes for our accounting purposes separate from the general fund?
Yeah, 1.16 million of it does go into the town's general fund to supply police funding.
So it's into 10 million?
So that's in the 10 million.
You know, it's in the 11.9 million.
11.99, as a rev.
Oh, I see. Including the parcels, okay, good. So then, in the recommendation, the committee recommended that we take 15 percent after we have reduced the unassigned balance by a capital project's shortfall amount. You suggested 15 percent for CalPERS and 15 percent for OPEB. Now, I understand that up to some dollar amount, which is well in excess of 300,000 that we were to assign to pay down our unfunded liabilities for OPEB, we would see an operating benefit from that because, because that's a liability that we actually...
It's debt servicing.
Yeah, it's debt servicing, right. So we, it reduces our, essentially, our interest rate that we have to be paying. Whereas what we would, the 306,015 percent that would be assigned to CalPERS would really be hedging against their unrealistic expected return. And we frankly know, based on CalPERS, that in, what is it, 2015 to '16, we're going to have to start paying more anyway because of the actuarial errors, I guess, that they made.
The 1 percent.
So, so, I mean, I, personally, I'm supportive of the idea of reserving for what, for the CalPERS problem. It's just the time bomb is waiting. I think we're frankly in fairly good shape relative to some of the other cities in San Mateo County. But, but I think it's intelligent for us if we have the funds to, to reserve for that. We don't see an operational benefit for that. So I guess I, I would be inclined to be conservative in what we do there, and 15 percent seems conservative to me. I like that. With respect to the OPEB, however, we do see an operating benefit. So if we have the funds, I'd be inclined to, on a voluntary basis, looking at it year to year to see where we stand, to pay that down further, just like the Council did in the last year.
Well, 15 percent is, is not derived from the kind of present value of actuarial liability that I was referring to.
Right.
It's just kind of a number applied to general fund expenditures.
Right.
And it seems rather arbitrary in that respect. I just feel it would be better if we did the calculation describing it, kind of looked at our liability, our real liability, our best estimate.
This seems like such a moving target. We never really pin it down.
Bill, Jim?
Okay. So are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. So first off, great presentation, thank you for that. And the tutorial that will follow with the reserve, other revenues was great. You know, I think we're very fortunate that we have a chance, we can even have this discussion because we have the surpluses now with what too long... I'm in favor of having a guideline. I'm not in favor of having a mandatory, this is how you take it off. I'm also not necessarily in favor of having a pre-decide, defined, this verse, and that, and that, and that, okay? Because I think that situations in the community needs change, and that's why you have a Council, that's why you have staff that makes recommendations. I think really, our, our off-balance-sheet liabilities, which I think we discussed that we would when we make our new budget, we will show them as on the balance sheet, you know, that's at least make it clear to everybody what they are. They're real numbers to us. It's the same as a capital plan. And I think that the only, the only difference is, is that with a capital project, you can delay it, and most of the time, it doesn't have any effect. You delay it for a year, and you do it next year versus this year, and it doesn't have that much of effect unless something's falling to, you know, the channel or something like that. In, in cases of some of our off-balance-sheet liabilities, if we delay them, they just get a little bit bigger. And so there is a benefit to paying them down, as we've all seen. When we paid off our side fund, you know, we generated about $375,000 of budget flexibility or budget agility in the current year. And, and that will pay dividends moving forward for another year or so. As we pay down the, you know, our OPEB, that also gives us a little bit of flexibility. And our, and our normal budgeting process should have a minimum payout, which I think we do. But we need to have the, the OPEB, I think, paid down. So I am in favor of doing this. I would have the OPEB a little bit higher than the CalPERS. We paid off our side fund. I think we're a little bit ahead of the game. I'm not minimizing what you said, Alan, because I, you and I are CII hours. I don't believe the, the numbers that they say they're going to achieve, even though they just had a great year, are what we're going to achieve. Just times will get near. But, but I do think that, you know, one A, you know, some, some absolute first needs, you know, protecting our capital infrastructure, that is, that is paramount. If we have something, we need to actually do something today, and we need the money for a capital program, or to protect something, we made an investment, and it needs to get some sort of resealing or something like that, obviously, that should be paramount because if we ignore that, it's like a cavity in your tooth, it's just going to get worse, and then it'll be abscessed, and then you have big expenses. But similarly, one, you know, one A should be paying off the OPEBs. And then after that, I think that, you know, then we can parcel them down. But I'm not in favor of really doing a, a very prescriptive, automatic, this is how it's going to work. I do think that the situation's changed from year to year, and we need to let the Council and the public, you know, weigh in on that. So also, I think the capital plan of looking forward three years, while I can understand, and that's better than a five-year, because, you know, looking out five years, you're never going to have the money. And I don't think we really scrutinize things from the capital plan, or even project stuff out. When we build our capital plan, the focus is really on the next one to two years. That's really the numbers we're scrubbing. So I would, I would be in favor of, if we're going to have an item for capital plan that we consider a two-year, but, but that we move, you know, this, the OPEB, I would like to see moved up in the prioritization list that was just discussed. I just think that it's, it puts money in our pocket and it gives us more money the next year. But I, but I wanted to go on record and say, I don't agree with shutting down 100 percent and paying off all the OPEB. First off, all those employees may or may not retire from this town. Secondly, there is the lifespan issue. And we're not listing any ill on somebody, but even if we pay off 100 percent of everybody who's retired here, you know, they're all not going to live up to what the actuarial people expect. So, you know, I would think that, you know, maybe with, with Robert and, and our next actuarial study that's being done, consider, you know, getting up to the people that are already retired, getting up to an 85 or a 90 percent, pay that, you know, pay that off as quickly as we can. But then leave the existing employees, and that other 10 percent floating, and just pay that down anywhere I can see. Add a couple hundred thousand dollars to our general fund operating balance on a year-on-year basis, and put us in really good shape and give us the flexibility we need in the future.
Perfect, Bill. Yeah, I was going to say that the Finance Committee, when we designed this so that anything under audited balance, starting with capital needs, is designed for the capital to be totally flexible at the discretion of the Council. That 15 percent for CalPERS or OPEB is not a fixed, proposed fixed number. It's up to you. You can make it zero, you can make it 100 percent. The plan was designed to provide the Council flexibility to address these issues, which provides, you know, again, flexibility as the times change. There was a sentiment on the Finance Committee led by me called Jim's Potholes, gets capital improvement projects going, show the citizens this town, we just passed the tax increase, let's fix some potholes, let's do some capital projects that are deferred. So that was our two sort of sentiments. And again, it wasn't just medium for the potholes, there was two or three others.
Right.
Doing that. So that was, but again, it's totally designed to be flexible. And we did compare at the top to the emergency reserve and required reserve against other comparable cities of our economic type, such as Los, Los Gatos, Hillsborough, some couple Marin County, Belvidere, et cetera, Woodside. And actually, we're actually pretty in good shape, we're the high, high middle on that. So again, keep the flexibility in mind, Bill, it's, it's not, you can do it all or nothing. It is designed to provide you the choice, it's not us.
I'm not suggesting depriving the City Council of the flexibility. I just think they ought to make these judgments in the light of what the...
Oh, I totally, I totally agree, Alan. I mean, as you know, I'm not a big fan of pension funds or any of this union foolishness. It's been, been clear, but if it's there, it's the law, we still have to address it. And again, you can go back, it could be 50 percent, it could be 100 percent, it could be whatever the Council decides it wants to be. That's all I'm saying.
Thanks, Bill.
Based on an all-day meeting I attended yesterday on the accounting rules, you know, the pensions will be recorded on June 30th of 2015, the unrecorded liability, and the OPEB will be recorded on June 30th of 2016. So they will be on our financial statements at those two dates. So they'll no longer be off-balance sheet. So the realities of it all will come to a boost at those two dates. And certainly, we could go ahead and do anything we want at this point, but I'm just saying it's, you're not going to have the flexibility you had before of off-balance sheet, and if you didn't do anything nobody knew about, except maybe in the footnotes. But now, there'll be a specific number, it'll be on the balance sheets, and we'll have to deal with it every year as to, you know, whether we're addressing it or whether we aren't. And I think that in late this year, OPEB will come out with a more definitive number than they have before. Help it with that, Robert, is that...
Correct. Well, as far as the, their meeting with the board, coming up with their assumptions and demographics, the June 2013 actuarial, which will be ending, which will be done this fall, will be the first actuarial to have the 15, 16 smoothing rate. So we'll get to start to see those policies. Then they will also have the scenarios regarding the difference in discount rates. They're going to have that as well in that actuarial. So those will come out this fall. So as of the June 30th, 2013 numbers. And again, so we'll have that 1.1% smoothing, and then we'll be able to see, based off of what we tried to anticipate was getting a sensitivity analysis, we'll see, you know, based on discount rate, whether it's 1%, 7%, 10%, we can see what that will do to us as far as gap, planning gap.
So we'll know better in November of this year, what it is they're going to be recording in June of 2015. So you can make a decision in November that says, well, we want to pre-fund so much based on whatever the numbers they come up with. Because they'll have alternative numbers that maybe be closer to what you would want, Alan, in the November calculations, because they're going to have different scenarios. So you'll have better numbers to look at. So I don't know that I would do too much on the pensions this year and wait until November. But OPEBs, you're kind of, you could do what you think is proper in, in June of 2016, that will be recorded.
Correct. I would echo, with one exception, what Bill said. In a relationship, the only discipline would be, I think we have to be better in all our plans. I think that we're, we're, we've got some, and as a lot of these master plans are going to come into play, that we're going to have to consider twice that, maybe because it's quite a few years to get out of the funds in essence to tackle some of these foreign projects. And I think that if we are too short-sighted, we'll never tackle these projects, and then we're going to end up with this monumental figure somewhere down the road, and we're going to get stuck and say, "How do we fund this $10 million project?" I think if we start identifying some of these bumper race needs, that we're going to have to have, it's eventual, it's coming. If it is something like, for example, the whole channel needs to be, we've done, well, that's going to be a serious, you know, consideration factor, it's going to take us years to eventually fund that. If we have some funds that you can dedicate over a period of time, if you'll soften it low, you're going to have to make the decision to figure out where to rest it from these little resources.
I'd like to echo what you're saying about the long-term change, that's why I brought it, that capital project needs, that it is an incredible number, because I think for the last 10 or 15, 20 years, our town has been in a very lean financial situation, and we have a lot of deferred maintenance, either, not necessarily on our streets, some of our streets, because we have a great CIP, but, yeah, say it again, yes. But there are a lot of infrastructure things that we need to address, some drainage issues, and some of these master plans that are going to come up to us. And so I think that is where we need to be investing, reinvesting, using our time to continue to build a strong finance infrastructure out.
Yeah, I would think that that's in conflict with what Bill said. And you were focused on two years, but we know we've got these three master plans coming in. And I don't think that we can really judge what the total picture is until we get the response from those master plans. And once we do, I want us to work hard to find a mechanism to go out to the residents to help the residents prioritize what we're going to do. If we're going to have to build from these master plans, we have had the infrastructure needs that we haven't addressed, and we're, you know, and I think that's fine. We're in a position to handle this. Right now, I, I feel good in terms of giving direction to staff to, I agree that we should, to the extent that we can, have some reserve that anticipates the CalPERS costs that we're going to have. I think that it is more important to reduce the OPEB liability because we see a direct benefit from that. And, and I don't have any problem with the idea of doing it up to 90 percent of the retirees. I think that... ninety percent of the retirees, I think that makes sense. I don't think we want to overstep that, I think that, I, I kind of want to hold our powder dry until we see what comes in from these master plans. So, the one thing I wouldn't want to do at this point is to make any kind of commitment to reduce the parcel tax. I, I think we should evaluate that every year, I think it's a really important discipline for us to do that every year, and I think the structure that the finance committee is proposing is a good one. I have a really hard time deciding that we're going to reduce it now until we see what comes in from these master plans.
I think so, because operationally, yeah.
Right, that'll be in the revenue handling process.
Which will take some time.
So, I, I thought that this was going to be a long-term type of decision process, and that it's going to be something that-
Exactly.
But now, you know, we're going to just pass the parcel tax, so, you know, I don't think it's prudent for us to say, "Oh, by the way, we don't need them." That sends the wrong message.
It goes into effect June.
Yes, right. But, so, you know, and you can know imagination-
Not in Chris.
Yeah, my, yeah, my imagination was not that we would immediately say, "Hey, guess what, thank you for voting for it, but we're not going to implement it."
Right.
That, that would probably be bad.
Yeah. We're probably wrong, so we get.
I don't think they would, yeah.
So, from staff's perspective, again, this was just a framework that the finance committee came up with, so we'll try and leave some of these major discussion points into your budget discussions as it comes up, and that real-life parcel tax discussion we've got to have in June.
Perfect.
Well, I was a part of this discussion last year, so this has been a long discussion on this, that's a good job.
This is very good. Can I borrow one of your slides there?
You want my slide?
I just, I just, just one. This is very good, this is not so good.
Well, that's for the audience.
That's for writing.
This is for the older crowd, which is like all day.
This is your writing notes?
Oh, I took all the notes, but I'm trying to read the little print, and I'm looking over here, Jim, going, "Gosh, you got a bigger bucket than I did."
That's just because-
Your PC, that, that we, okay, it's right there, it is right there.
I, you know, I will say, I did bring it, and I actually used it, I must have picked a pair of copies, and I scribbled all over it, but I still, uh-
Would you like to have one?
No, I just, I don't, I felt a little-
As, as the guy who's on the trash board, I don't want to see a bunch of favorite-
He does a little PowerPoint.
I'm sorry about that, but I just was enjoying your nice, large copies. These copies were hard to get at first, and I said, "All right." All right, perfect.
There is the mountain, it's all.
Yeah, thank you. It depends on when you got there. I had a fine presentation, but anyways, perfect, thank you, Seth. This was a very good, detailed report, and, you know, the finance committee, and I can remember on the finance committee, there's a measure, numbers are sometimes hard to work with, you guys continue to work with it, and I, we keep your attention, Chris. Thank you.
Just before we leave, I have a question. Alan, you brought up the issue of wanting the actuarial assessment of what the liabilities are now, and Greg commented about how there's going to just change later this year from the accounting standard for it.
Well, they'll provide alternatives, I guess.
So, I'm just, I'm just, so, do we need to not do anything at this time?
I think what Greg said, this is GASB is going to, Chris, write that.
They're going to require recording the pensions in 2015, June thirtieth, and then OPEBs in 2016.
But we've already decided that we are going to be putting those on our financial statements anyway.
No, not, not recording them.
Yes.
They'll, they'll show up on our financial statements as notes and have them added in?
Notes? We're talking about, he's going to be into financials.
I think you're talking about decisions that being made for next year that could change how we do things.
Well, it'll just be more apparent because it'll be on the financials instead of in the footnotes.
Right. We said we would talk about it openly, it would be very clear. We looked at the finances, it's one of the things that we reread last year, that it was an important thing, that we wanted to make sure that everybody, the public understood as well as us, it keeps us in the forefront.
Very clear in the financial statements. I thought it was going to be, you know, integrated into it and not just as a footnote. I thought we were going to do it prior, you know, knowing that it was coming down the road as a mandate, that we were going to be proactive and do it so that it was very clear to all of our residents.
Right, and I thought Robert would agree.
No, and we are, and, and the reason for, for it gets a delay is because the state of California has, has one, they have to do theirs a year prior to everybody else to roll out, to get the actual, to do the GASB portion. So, the state goes first, because they're the ones that have to get all, all the information, they're the ones that have to do report requirements, and then the cities have to roll it out. But we'll see it, we'll see it in our actuarials. And again, because of the ramp up of the, whatever the unfunded liability is, this, this new ramp up, this is going to fund that unfunded liability, it's going to amortize it, and it's going to amortize it quickly. So, what will happen is, that's why you have that one percent increase every year, they're adding it towards the member contribution. So, that's what's going to ramp up to pay down that unfunded liability quicker. And so, they're, they're doing that, and so, when, they're, they're all doing it at once, so they're going to do that, and then they're requiring the rollout, which will be mandatory, and will be reported in your financials.
When you say one percent, it's one percent-
Every year.
But above the, what percent are we doing now?
The R, the end of the-
Whatever our contribution is, right now, the, it's eleven point four percent for miscellaneous, twenty-six percent for police.
So, one percent is more than-
On top of that, one point one percent.
It's a percentage as to the twelve percent, so it's like fifteen percent increase.
Each, each year.
No, 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 it's a straight one point one percentage point.
A payroll.
If our rate is twelve point six, it'll be thirteen point seven.
Right, 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 right.
For one year and then the next year.
But, but still, just because there is this new way that they're going to amortize and break it forward, okay, the process of that happens, that has nothing to do with us reporting it on our financials.
No, and we do-
You're kind of saying, this is our balance, this is essentially, it's a balance, yeah.
We're showing down its portion. Yeah, George, that's an eight percent increase, one percent over twelve point five would be eight percent increase, it's not a one percent, that's the point I wanted to make. It's an eight percent increase in our pension expense, even though it's only one percent on the payroll.
Correct.
Right.
Right. And then there's another component of it, which I think Alan was talking to, and that's the disparity between the seven point five percent discount rate, the seven point two five percent rate that CalPERS is projecting in reality. And Cal-